Okay. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 7:01. Can I have a moment of silence, please? Please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undeniably, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call. Mrs. Turner here. Ms. Blystein?
Here.
Mr. Bromhall?
Here.
Mr. Evans? Mr. Gaffney?
Here.
Ms. Ico?
Here.
Mr. Kenny?
Here.
Ms. Quinn?
Here.
Ms. Fitzwater here. Statement is hereby made that adequate notice of this meeting was given by submission of said notice to the Burlington County Times, The Courier-Post, the Cinnamons and Township Clerk, and the district website on January 4th, 2023. Moving on to Section 4 Routine Business. We had the Board Secretaries report for December 2022, the Treasurers' report for December 2022, the Budget Receipts and Transfers for December 2022, the Monthly Transfer Report as of February 15th, 2023, the High School Activities Report for January of '23, the Food Service Management Cost Performance Statement for January of 2023, Certified Bill List for January 12th through January 31st of '23, and February 1st through February 15th of '23, the Approval of Minutes, the Regular Minutes of January 17th, and the Confidential Minutes also of January 17th. Ms. Turner, can I have a motion to approve Section 4 Routine Business, Items A through H? So moved. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gaffney. Comments or questions from the board? Hearing now will take a vote. Ms. Ico?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion approved. Moving on to Section 5 Routine Matters. A is the Enrollment Report as of February 17th. B is the Health Report of January 2023. C is the Fire Alarm Report for January 2023. D is the Crisis Bureau Report for January. E is the HIB Report. And F is the Superintendent's Monthly Report, Mr. Capello.
Thank you, Mrs. Fitzwater. Thank you, members of the board, and also thank you to members of the public for being here this evening. A few short things on the Superintendent's Report, starting with a couple of people that I'd like to recognize for a job well done. With this past Super Bowl time, we returned to our character education initiatives, with our first one taking place around the Super Bowl. And I'd like to recognize Ms. DiClemente for spearheading a fundraiser for the Food Bank of South Jersey. And unfortunately, while the Eagles did not win, many students were rewarded with a Pajamas Day the next day, and all told, over 900 food items were collected and will be donated to the Food Bank of South Jersey. So we look forward to several other character education-related events throughout the rest of the year. I'd also like to recognize Dr. Goldburn publicly, our building principals, and all of our staff presenters, who put together a very well-thought-out and well-planned-out Professional Development Day this past Friday. I know our students enjoyed it tremendously. I'd also like to recognize Ms. Bogus and the students from our CHS affinity groups, who planned and executed a fantastic MLK celebration, have been spreading the message from the King Center of, quote, "Be Love." Mrs. Bogus will lead a series of presentations at CMS in the coming weeks alongside members of the CHS affinity teams. Some upcoming events that are probably on many of your radars. Chicago, under the direction of Ms. Megan Schweitzer, opens on Friday, March 3rd. We're very excited the high school will be adding a second weekend to their school musical. And they flip-flop positions this year with the middle school. So after the second week of high school musicals, we'll transition to the middle school, who will be putting on a production of Crazy for You, which opens on March 17th. Speaking of March, we'll be hosting, in conjunction with the Burlington County Education Association, a Read Across New Jersey event, where we'll have dignitaries from throughout Burlington County and the South Jersey area come to New Albany School and read to all of our students there, and also leave them with a special surprise as well. And finally, just to update the public, we are making very good progress in the CEA and board negotiations, and hope to possibly have resolution to that as early as next month. Mrs. Fitzwater, that's the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Capello. Mr. Gaffney, can I have a motion to approve Section 5 Routine Matters, Items A through F?
Salute.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Kenny. Comments or questions from the board? Hearing now will take a vote. Ms. Blystein?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion approved. We're going to move to the Student Representatives Report, and the first we have is from the high school, and Emma Schreier.
Good evening. The Golden Apple Award for February was presented to Mrs. Lori Highland by Senior Rachel Murphy. The Students of the Month for January are Class of 2023 Katie Ambos, Class of 2024 Andrew Zemecki, Class of 2025 Tabai Quinn, and Class of 2026 James Gazowski. In the month of February, the character attribute of focus is perseverance. Perseverance is the quality that allows someone to continue trying to do something, even though it is difficult. It is the ability to set goals and work hard to achieve them. To pursue worthy objectives with determination and patience, while exhibiting strength and courage when confronted with failure demonstrates perseverance. For an update on sports, the wrestling team finished its season with a record of 15-8, more than doubling their wins from last season. Seniors Patrick Egan, 29 and 6, Isaiah Ruiz, 30 and 4, and Owen Torque, 20 and 10, did a great job with their leadership and determination on the mat. Junior Luke Smith, 25 and 10, sophomores Dylan Malone, 25 and 4, Eddie Frey, 23 and 12, and freshman Dominic Moreno, 26 and 6, all had strong seasons, which they hope carry over into the individual postseason tournaments. Congrats to CHS Swimming for their most recent upset over number two, Haddon Heights, 89 to 81. The team advances to face Haddonfield in the sectional championship. Congrats to Noah McChrystie for breaking a school record tonight in the 200 individual medley with a time of 157.42. The boys' winter track crowned two state champions when the boys' shot put team and the 4x800 team won titles. Seniors Josh Neal and Malakai Etienne were winners in the shot put, and seniors Alex Boyko, Matt McCarron, and Ryan and Derek Cosiano won it for the boys' 4x800 team. Only three state champions from Cinnamons have ever been crowned previously in the 30-plus-year history of this event. The surprise of the season has been junior Derrick Robinson, who is currently the top-ranked high jumper in the entire state with a 6'6" jump. The team followed that up by winning the Group 2 sectional championship on Saturday, February 4th. Senior Alex Boyko won the 1600 and 3200. Robinson won the high jump, and Derrick Cosiano, 3rd in 800. Matt McCarron, 3rd in 3200. Jimmy LaGranne, 6th in 55 meters. And Dean Clark, 5th in 3200. And Etienne, 2nd in shot. All placed in their events and scored points to send the boys to the title and through to the state championships. The girls had a nice Group 2 state relay championship meet, finishing in a tie for eighth. They finished third in the 4x800 with a team of seniors Stephanie Renoff and Sam Megan, junior Anna Moreno, and sophomore Kellen Kohler. The same girls combined for fourth in the distance medley relay. At the sectionals on Saturday, February 4th, the girls finished in a tie for eighth, with Renoff winning the lone title in the 3200 run. Kohler placed 5th in the 800, and seniors Leah DelGrippe and Cozey Quinn, 5th in high jump, also scored. For boys' basketball, on February 8th, the team beat Pemberton 69 to 59 and clinched in the Patriot Division Championship with the win. Over the weekend, the team beat Holy Cross 73 and 49 in their final regular-season game, and their first-round game is at home tonight at 6:00 p.m. For girls' basketball, on Thursday, February 16th, the girls' basketball team beat Lower Cape May for their 24th winner of the season. Congrats to Brooke Cindelovitch for becoming the school's all-time leader. Marissa DeLeo in 2016 in three-pointers made for a female. Their first game in the playoffs was today at 4:00 p.m. versus Lindenwald. Our play-unified basketball team ended its season on Thursday, February 16th, at Burlington City. It's been a great year. Congratulations to all the players. Go Pirates! Congratulations to the mock trial team, who finished their season 3-2, record, in the Burlington County competition. The defense team earned victories against Moorestown and Lenape, while the plaintiff team won against Northern Burlington. On Monday, February 13th, the defense team argued a very close case against top-ranked Borden Town, but narrowly lost to them in the county championship round. Mrs. Patel and Mr. Becker are extremely proud of the team's hard work and growth this season, and already look forward to next year's criminal case. Interact hosted Casino Night for the ARSC of Burlington County on Friday night, February 10th, in the CHS Cafeteria. Approximately 75 guests and their caregivers enjoyed a night of dancing, games, and prizes. CHS students also enjoyed interacting with the guests at this meaningful event, which hasn't been held since the pandemic. Interact looks forward to hosting again next year. Stop and Sad members attended the annual Sticker Shock campaign. Sticker Shock is an awareness campaign to educate the public and change attitudes about selling and serving alcohol to anyone under 21. The project organizes the youth to place stickers on beer cases in local stores. The stickers contain a warning, providing alcohol to a person under 21 is a crime. Everyone had a great time. Cinnamons and High School Drama Club is proud to present Chicago Teen Edition. For the first time in school history, they will be presenting six shows. Show dates are March 3rd at 7:30 p.m., March 4th at 7:30 p.m., March 5th at 2:00 p.m., March 10th at 7:30 p.m., March 11th at 2:00 p.m., and March 11th at 7:30 p.m. All performances are held at Cinnamons and High School Auditorium. Sorry. They would like to give a special thanks to our graduating class of 2023 members, our cast, crew, and pit, our parent volunteers, and the Cinnamons Administrators and Board of Education, our maintenance and custodial staff, and the local community. Ticket prices are $15 for adults, $10 for students, and senior citizens. Cinnamons and senior citizen cards will be accepted at all performances. Students can return for another performance with the purchase of one ticket. Children age 5 and under are free. The Sunday, March 5th matinee is free for seniors. The Drama Club hopes to see you at the CHS Auditorium, and that you are prepared for all that jazz. The NHS held their annual blood drive on February 3rd, 2023. We had 91 positive donations to the Red Cross. We're so grateful for the community members, faculty, and students, who made the day such a great success. The AP Psychology and Human Behavior classes held a collection of personal care items for patients in a local mental health care facility. Many patients arrive with their own items from home, and these collected items will provide a sense of comfort for them. Many thanks to the students, parents, and faculty and staff who donated. Sorry. On February 15th, the CHS affinity leaders traveled to Rush and New Albany schools to read. It starts with me, written by Dr. Bernice A. King and Dr. Kimberly P. Johnson, a story about Amora as she encourages her friends to be love. Throughout the remainder of February, CHS will have a speaker series for different grade levels held in the auditorium. The speakers include leaders from our state, the CHS community, and in education. Finally, there will be a community event held on February 25th from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. in the CHS Cafeteria. This celebration of opulence in black art and expression will be an experience of contemporary dance, spoken word, art exhibition, and vendors for the whole community. Finally, 14 DECA members will be attending the 2023 New Jersey DECA State Career Development Conference at Harrah's Resort in Lenox City, February 27th to March 1st. Please wish them good luck in hopes of qualifying for ICDC competition in April.
Thank you, Emma. Any comments from the board?
Are you done?
No.
She's not done. We've got a couple more.
She's got a little more.
Oh, I'm sorry. It was just a breath. My apologies. Keep going.
This past week, the chapter was notified. It received gold certification for an excellent rating on the 36-page written business manually submitted. As a result, they will be eligible to send up three additional members to the 2023 DECA International Career Development Conference, to be held April 22nd to the 25th in Orlando, Florida. The chapter hosted a guest speaker on Tuesday, February 14th, for the 14 SEDC participants. Mr. Brendan Menoff, father of members Stephanie and Emily, and Vice President of Global Human Resources of Holman Enterprises in Mount Laurel, served as an event judge at the January 10th Southwest District Conference. We thank him for his support and of our members attending SEDC. That's it. Thank you.
Good?
Yeah.
Thank you. There is a lot going on at Cinnamons and High School. And I thank you for that report. Now, we're going to move to the Middle School Student Rep Report, and that is Lucia Schlep.
Good evening to you all. I'd first like to report on our January Students of the Month. For January, we had Victoria Ramos for 6th grade, Evan Everest for 7th, and Marilla Susan for 8th grade. Our CMS Student Council assisted with organizing the theme for our Winter Snowball Dance for 7th and 8th grade students on January 20th from 6:30 to 8:30. Students had a great time racing in the inflatable obstacle course, as well as dancing to Mr. Noble's great DJ skills. Winter sports wrapped up their seasons. Wrestling wrapped up their season 5 to 7. This was an improvement from the previous year, and we continue to build momentum going into next year with most of our wrestlers in 6th grade. A special shout-out to the A's basketball team. They had an impressive 11-1 record. The girls' B basketball team had an awesome season. The girls played with their hearts in every game, whether they were a beginning player or a more seasoned player. The boys' A basketball team finished the season with a 6-6 record. The team improved every single game and really came together as a team as some injuries mounted. The boys' B basketball team had a very successful season with nine wins and three losses. CMS Spring Sports sign-ups begin on February 20th. Spring Sports Physicals are being held at CMS on February 22nd and March 3rd. February is Black History Month. This is an opportunity to spotlight African-American history and the contributions of African-Americans both locally and in the world around us. Throughout the month, CMS student volunteers will serve as special guest readers on Pirate TV News to feature influential figures related to Black history. These same figures are also artistically displayed on a quilt in the media center. In addition to classroom activities and lessons, we hope to create meaningful learning experiences for all of our students. Congratulations to Catherine Smith, Cinnamons and Middle Schools nominee, for the BCPSA 8th grade award. Catherine was nominated by CMS staff members as a representative from the 8th grade class, who best demonstrates high academic standards, leadership qualities, and service to the school and community. Core Day was held on Thursday, February 2nd, which included 250 students from the district, sharing musical performances from each school. Along with the performances, the high schoolers answered questions about CHS's choir program. It was a great day to learn and collaborate. CMS partnered with schools across the district in the annual cereal for pajamas collection. Students and staff bought cereal, oatmeal, granola, and breakfast bars to school during the week leading up to the Super Bowl, and wore pajamas to school on Monday, February 13th. Donations were delivered to the Bread of Life Food Pantry and the Food Bank of South Jersey. On Tuesday, February 7th, our 7th grade students were inducted into the National Junior Honor Society, and on Thursday, February 9th, 8th graders had their induction ceremony. The January meeting had their students creating vision boards based on what service means to them. On Monday, February 27th, all 6th grade students are invited to the rink for a skating party from 3:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. Transportation will be provided to and from the rink. Parents and guardians will be responsible for picking up their child around 5:15. Parents received a permission slip this week. CMS will be celebrating Read Across America the week of February 27th through March 3rd. The students will participate in the following themedays to celebrate literature. Monday, we positively love books. Wear a shirt with a positive message. Tuesday, happy birthday, Dr. Seuss. Wear a Dr. Seuss or special hat. Wednesday, our school loves to read. Wear Cinnamons and Spirit gear. Thursday, books brighten our world. Wear tie dye or neon. Friday, I'm a reading fanatic. Wear your favorite sports team or jersey. On Friday, March 3rd, there will be a special bell schedule. Students, staff, and special guests from the district will be reading in the afternoon for 2023 seconds, 33.7 minutes. Along with celebrating Read Across America, CMS is asking for donations of new or gently-used baby, kids, and teen books. Donations will be going to BooksMiles to benefit kids in schools in need of reading books. There will be a bin outside the main office all week for donations. Thank you, and I hope you all have a great night.
Thank you, Lucia. Any comments for our Middle School rep? Thank you very much. All right, we're going to move on to number seven, presentation. Mr. Capello.
Thank you, Mrs. Fitzwater. Some of our folks here are repeat attendees at board meetings. You may be aware of the Student Safety Data System reports. It is required by school districts to be reported on a biannual basis. This happens to be the time of the year when we report on Reporting Period 1, which essentially is the first half of school, and then sometime just after summer, we will report on the second half of the school year. So there are three attachments in the Board Doc system that outline some of the required reporting data points. The first one is listed as HIB trainings and programs. And rather than read off the paper, board members and members of the public can see in summary in Reporting Period 1 from '22-'23. There were 17 events that were characterized as trainings, and 35 characterized as programs, which is fairly consistent. We have some data points there from Report Period 1 of last year, as well as Report Period 2 from last year. Moving along, the second attachment under Board Docs is labeled SSDS Report Period 1 Certification. This is the certification page that we're normally used to seeing as a part of the packet. The state has changed the reporting system this year, so that there was some consistency between report periods and year-over-year. We captured this screenshot of what we officially submit as our results to the Department of Education from this report period. And as you can see on Report Period 1, and this is September 1st through December 31st, 2022, incidents, and I will read this down, from the high school, there were 15 incidents, middle school 10, New Albany 1, Eleanor Rush School 7. And we do list Cinnamons and Memorial Schools separately now. As members of the public may recall, this is where our preschool exists. So I'm happy to report that there are no incidents that qualify for reporting at the preschool level. Moving right along, the second category lists other incidents that led to removal that would not qualify as an incident under the SSDS. And on the next slide, we'll talk about what those separate categories are for things that would qualify as an SSDS reportable event. But just to summarize here briefly, those would be incidents of violence, vandalism, substance abuse, weapons, and HIB confirmed cases would qualify. So that is the second page, the second attachment there, and that was our certification that was submitted to the Department of Education. The third attachment labeled, if you are following along online or at home, is labeled SSDS, and again, that is short for Student Safety Data System incidents. And it outlines a little bit of a summary. This was prepared to be able to show the 2022 Report Period 1, juxtaposed against the Report Period 1 this time last year, and also Report Period 2, which was the second half of the year. And if you recall, when we reported this time last year, there was a rather significant increase over the 2020 school year, upon which we, you know, spent a lot of time virtually, and there were very few incidents to report. So there was a significant uptick. And I think if you were to follow along here for Report Period 1, some of the totals have shown a more normalized decline. So if we were to look back three years prior to where we were pre-pandemic, our numbers are back closer to that, and even in some key areas, they are less. So again, rather than read straight across, you can see that at the high school, again, there were 15 versus Report Period last year, 14, fairly consistent. The middle school, we did see a significant decline from 30 incidents down to 10. And at Rush School, a slight decrease as well. And at New Albany School, this time last year, there were no incidents, and it still is extremely low, at one reportable incident. But in terms of total incidents, 53 is down this year in the reportable period to 33. That said, if I can editorialize, any incident that rises to the level of needing to be reported on SSDS is reported because we ensure that we report everything according to what we are supposed to report. And I don't know that, well, I probably shouldn't say whether or not that is the case in every school district, but we do take a lot of pride in reporting by the book, and we do appreciate the downward trend. And also, while I'm editorializing, any incident that qualifies on the SSDS is taken seriously, and one incident is too many, so we will continue to address all of these areas of violence, vandalism, substance abuse, weapons, and of course, areas of HIB harassment, intimidation, and bullying as we move forward, and hope to present a report in Report Period 2 that continues to show a trend in this direction. So questions from members of the board? That is the SSDS report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Capello. We're going to Section 8, Correspondence to the Board. Does anyone have anything to report? Section 9 is the Committee Reports, and we had three committee meetings this month. So we'll start with a report on the Facility and Transportation Committee, and that is Mr. Kenny.
Thank you. The Facilities and Transportation Committee met via Google meeting on Monday, January 30th. Mrs. Livinggood gave an update on the fuel tank replacement project. T&amp;M Associates will be providing engineer services. The current project includes an 8,000-gallon gasoline fuel tank. There's a three-to-four-month timeframe for engineers to complete preliminary work, and then the district can go out to bid. The capital project that is being considered is a pole barn at the Memorial School for the SAC program, and the district is in process of seeking LRFP approval. Mr. Capello reviewed maintenance and capital project requests from the administration throughout the district. These projects will be considered for the 2023-2024 budget approval. Lastly, Mr. Capello and Mrs. Livinggood discussed the purchase of bus routing GPS systems for the Transportation Department. The department is currently working with vendors to obtain information and quotes. And the next meeting in the committee has not been scheduled yet. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kenny. Next, we hear from the Chair of the Finance and Personnel Committee, and that is Mr. Bromhall.
Thank you. The Finance Personnel Committee met via Google Meet on Tuesday, February 13th. Mrs. Livinggood provided the following budget and audit updates. The Governor's address is scheduled for February 28th. State aid figures will be released within 40 hours of the address. Preliminary transmission of the 2023-2020-24 budget will be on the agenda for board approval on March 14th, and must be submitted to the county office by March 20th. The fiscal year 2022 audit will be filed by March 17th, due to extensions granted by the state of New Jersey. The audit will be reviewed at a regularly-scheduled board education meeting coming up. Mr. Capello discussed personnel needs for the 2022-2023 school year, including new hires, long-term subs, and salaries. As part of the 2023 and 2020-24 budget planning process, Mr. Capello reviewed staffing requests from building administration. And in addition, Ms. Luen reviewed the 23-24 staffing needs for the Child Study Team Department due to enrollment. And the next meeting for the Finance and Personnel Committee is scheduled for March 7th at 4:00 p.m. via Google Meet. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bromhall. And finally, we also had a Policy and Legislation Committee meeting. Ms. Quinn is the chair of that, and will report out on that.
The Policy and Legislation Committee met online via Google Meet on Tuesday, February 13th, 2023. We reviewed the current policy alert as published by Strauss Esme. The policy updates were reviewed and consisted mostly of updated compliance language, so that district policies are in line with the state statutes. At the committee, we spent additional time discussing our district's attendance policy. And finally, the committee briefly reviewed pending legislation that is working its way through the New Jersey General Assembly and Senate. And the next policy committee meeting has not been scheduled yet at this time. has not been scheduled yet at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Quinn. Ms. Ziacon, can I have a motion to approve Section Nine, Item A, Committee Reports?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Comments or questions from the board? Hearing them will take a vote. Ms. Blystein?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion approved. Moving on to Section 10, Public Comment on Any Items Appearing on the Agenda. If members of the public are reminded, the comments in this section of the public comment should be limited to items appearing on the meeting's agenda. There will be another opportunity during the meeting to comment on non-agenda items. Moving on then to Section 11, Personnel Certificated. Mr. Capello.
Thank you again, Mrs. Fitzwater. Bear with me one second, I'm having a short internet outage. There we go. Under Section 11, Personnel Certificated, Letter A, seeking the board to approve Items One and Two as listed in the agenda. Letter B, again, I apologize, a little bit of an internet lag here, seeking the board to approve Item Number One as listed in the agenda. Letter C, there are none this evening. Under Letter D, I think this is going to be thematic, just giving a second for the internet to catch up, seeking the board to approve Item Number One, and all of those names are listed in the agenda under Advancements on the Salary Guide. Under Letter E, seeking the board to approve... I don't know if everybody is streaming the basketball game at the high school right now, but it is unusually slow. So under Letter E, Extra Duty Appointments, seeking the board to approve Items One through Four as listed in the agenda. However, I would ask the board to please disregard on the attachment there, the personnel Item Number Six under Extra Duty Appointments, that person has withdrawn, and we're not asking for board approval at this time. Under Letter F, Leaves of Absence, seeking the board to approve Items One through Four listed by employee number in the agenda. Under Letter G, Substitute Teachers and Nurses, seeking the board to approve Items One through Three as listed in the agenda. Under Letter H, seeking the board to approve Items One and Two, names listed in the agenda. There are no student teachers for consideration by the board at this time. Under Letter J, Mentor Teachers, seeking the board to approve Item One as listed in the agenda. And Mrs. Fitzwater, that was Personnel Certificated. Hopefully, we have a little better luck with non-certificated.
Yeah, I don't know about that. All right. Mr. Kenny, can I have a motion to approve Section 11, Personnel Certificated, Items A through J?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Comments or questions from the board? Hearing them will take a vote. Ms. Iacon?
Nay, I vote no. A, Number One.
Aye.
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 Nay for 11A, Number One, aye for the rest.
Motion approved. Moving on to Section 12, Personnel Non-Certificated.
Real quick, before we move on to non-certificated, Mr. Gorman, you have someone to introduce to the board.
I do. It's my pleasure to introduce Gabrielle Lookett. She is joining us from TC, increasing riding with TC RJ.
Of course she is.
She's a STEM and engineer teacher. We're incredibly excited.
And thus ends the longest job opening in the history of Cinnamon's. We are very happy to have you here, Gabby. As Mr. Gorman said, she is a certified technology and engineering teacher from the College of New Jersey, now officially doubling the number of certified tech ed teachers in the district from the College of New Jersey. Congratulations, I think you're going to do great things here. Now we can move on to non-certificated.
Okay.
All righty. Under Section 12 now, Personnel Non-Certificated, Letter A, seeking the board to approve... Not going to have much better luck here. Bear with me for a second.
Yeah, I'm surprised I saw it.
Seeking the board to approve the one item under Letter A. Under Letter B, seeking the board to approve Items One through Four as listed in the agenda. Under Letter C, reappointments and adjustments, seeking the board to approve Items One through Six as listed in the agenda. Under Letter D, extracurricular, seeking the board to approve Items One through Five as listed in the agenda. Under Letter E, transfers, seeking the board to approve Items One and Two as listed in the agenda. There are no non-certificated job descriptions on the agenda this evening, and seeking the board to approve, under Letter G, Items One and Two as listed in the agenda. Mrs. Fitzwater, that is Personnel Non-Certificated.
Thank you, Mr. Capello. Ms. Quinn, can I have a motion to approve Section 12, Personnel Non-Certificated, Items A through G?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Kenny. Comments or questions from the board? Hearing them will take a vote. Ms. Blystein?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion approved.
Before we move on, I would ask Ms. Beth Ann West, if you don't mind standing up and saying hello to the board. Ms. West has the very arduous and difficult task of being the new administrative assistant in the superintendent's office. This is often the very first face that new employees will see when they come to the district, and we're very delighted to have Ms. West join us here with her many years of experience. And obviously, you've heard it, and you'll hear it again, very big shoes to fill. We're very sorry to see Mrs. O'Neal retire after many years of service, but we know you will do wonderful things and be a great face for our district, so welcome to Cinnamon's.
All right, moving on to Section 13, Curriculum and Instruction. Dr. Goldburn?
Thank you. Under 13, Letter A, requesting board approval of the professional development requests that are attached. Under 13B, requesting approval of the field trip requests that are attached. Letter C and D, there are no requests this month. Under Letter E, requesting board approval of the amendment to the District's Elementary and Secondary Act grant application for this school year for Titles One, Two, Three, and Four. And that is it for this month.
Thank you, Dr. Goldburn. Mr. Bromholm, can I have a motion to approve Section 13, Curriculum and Instruction, Items A through E?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Comments or questions from the board? Hearing them will take a vote. Ms. Blystein?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion approved. Moving on to Section 14, Special Education. Mrs. Llewellyn?
Thank you, Mrs. Fitzwater. Under Letter A, Contracts, there are none. Under Letter B, Student Placements, seeking the board to ratify and affirm three tuition contracts that are listed in the agenda. Under Letter C, Consultant Agreements, there are none. And that is it for this month. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Llewellyn. Ms. Blystein, can I have a motion to approve Section 14, Special Education, Items A through Six?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Comments or questions from the board? Hearing them will take a vote. Ms. Iacon?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion approved. Moving on to Section 15, Policy. Mr. Capello.
Thank you again, Mrs. Fitzwater, seeking the board to approve on first reading the following policies and regulations as listed in the agenda, and I would also like to point out that the first two policies listed, 1648-11 and 1648-13, are abolished, policies no longer required by the Department of Education or the state legislature, so they will be abolished on this board meeting and will not require a second reading at the next board meeting. All of those policies are attached in the agenda, so. This is policy.
Thank you, Mr. Capello. Ms. Turner, can I have a motion to approve Section 15, Letter A, Policies and Regulations?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gaffney. Comments or questions from the board? Hearing them will take a vote. Ms. Blystein?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion approved. Moving on to Business and Finance. Ms. Livinggood.
Thank you, Mrs. Fitzwater. Under Business and Finance, Letter A, Grants, Item Number One A is that the board accepts the revised 2223 funding statement for services under Chapter 192 and 193 as attached, and Item Number One B, that the board accepts the 2223 additional or compensatory special education and related services aid for students with disabilities as attached. Section B, Finance, Item Number One, that the board approves the mileage reimbursement requests for staff members as attached. Item Number Two, that the board approves the 2023-2024 Integrated Preschool Program annual tuition to be $3,250. Item Number Three, that the board approves the Special Education Medicaid Initiative Action Plan as attached. And Item Number Four, that the board approves the closure of the attached scholarship accounts due to $0 balances and inactivity for five or more years. Section C, Operations, Item Number One, that the board approves the discarding of athletic wrestling mats, which are compressed and a safety hazard as attached. Item Number Two, that the board approves the revised meeting dates for January 2023 through June of 2024 for the Board of Education meetings as attached. Item Number Three, that the board approves the school bus emergency evacuation drills as attached. Section D, Contracts, Item Number One, that the board approves the contract with T&amp;M Associates for providing professional engineering and environmental services as attached. Item Number Two, that the board approves a change order for the energy upgrade contract with PSENG and Hutchison as attached. Item Number Three, that the board approves a 60-month contract from the date of installation for copiers with RICO under New Jersey State Contract as attached. And Item Number Four, that the board approves the joint transportation agreement between Cinnamon's and Township Board of Ed as the host district and Pemberton Township Board of Ed as the joiner district as attached. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Livinggood. I just also want to point out that the board meeting dates, next month's meeting date was changed, it's a week earlier, it's the 14th, due to limitations on the budgeting date, so we had to move it up. So it was originally listed for the following week. Mr. Gaffney, can I have a motion to approve Section 16, Business and Finance, Items A through D?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Kenny. Comments or questions from the board? Hearing them will take a vote. Ms. Iacon?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. We're going on to Other Business, Section 17, the Safe Return Plan Update. Mr. Capello?
Yes, members of the board, if you recall, this is a little bit of an exercise in compliance required that we reapprove our Safe Return Plan every six months. I believe this is the last time that it will need to be approved in a public forum. It is decidedly unchanged from previous versions, but again, it's part of our compliance exercise. So it is on the agenda under Other Business, so I'm seeking the board's approval of the Safe Return Plan, again, required to be submitted, resubmitted to the Department of Ed every six months.
Do we need to motion then?
We should motion, yes.
Mr. Kenny, can I have a motion to approve Section 17, Safe Return Plan Update?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Comments or questions from the board? Hearing them will take a vote. Ms. Blystein?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion approved. Moving on to Section 18, Public Comments on Other Matters. During the Public Comments section of the meeting, the board will seek public comment on any item. Members of the public are reminded, if they wish to speak, participants should state their first and last name and address clearly for the record. In accordance with Cinnamon's and Board of Education bylaws, comments will be limited to a maximum of four minutes per person. The comment period will not exceed 30 minutes. If anyone would like to comment?
I'm Terry Joyce. I lived in Cinnamon's for nine years. I have two children in the district.
Mr. Joyce, could you please give your address for the record?
Oh, Cinnamon's. Do you need my street address? Paddock Lane?
It is customary, but if you're not comfortable, that's fine.
Oh, okay. 18 Paddock Lane in Cinnamon's.
Thank you.
The Special Education Parent Advisory Group was arranged for the New Jersey Coalition for Inclusive Education to come to Cinnamon's and give a presentation entitled Inclusion 101. This will be two weeks from today, March 7th, at 6:30 here at the middle school. CPAG invites all board members, administration, teachers, staff, district parents, and community members to attend. We also would appreciate your assistance in spreading the word to the school community as inclusion is an issue that impacts all students, not just those with IEPs. We appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Ms. Joyce, I'm sorry, real quick, could you state the date and time of that again? You mentioned it was at the middle school.
March 7th at 6:30 here at the middle school.
March 7th, 6:30. Thank you, Ms. Joyce.
Hi, my name's Asha Quinn. I live at 110 Windinbrook in Cinnamon's. Cinnamon's and real estate agents will tell you that the reason that our town is so hot on the real estate market is because of our schools. Our academics are solid, top third of the state, the top three in the country. Our district is increasingly diverse. At our best, we celebrate our students' differences in culture, tradition, language, race, ethnicity, family structure, beliefs, talent, interests, and skills. Our faculty and our staff build on those differences to form a stronger and united community. We offer our students opportunities often only available in districts 10 times our size. These activities allow our kids to build leadership skills, to find their passions, to serve their communities, to represent our town, learn more about themselves and their place in the world, grow comfortable and confident in their own skin. Our district isn't perfect, but we are strong at our core. It's why it's so disheartening that lately I've seen a small group, a very loud people in our town, try to tear down what we have using talking points crafted by state and national groups that have never set foot in a Cinnamon's and classroom. These extremists talk about teachers as if they are rebellious serving class rather than trained professionals who are interested in our students' success. They protest about values-based education and scream about parents' rights, but they don't represent most Cinnamon's and families. Most Cinnamon's and families are proud that our kids go to school in a district that's been recognized for its character education program. We're happy that our children are taught honesty, pride, kindness, friendship, responsibility, and acceptance. We appreciate that our children are faced with ideas that challenge them and, yes, sometimes make them uncomfortable. We'd rather talk throughout those ideas at home in light of our own family's beliefs than have them walk into a world unprepared. Most Cinnamon's and families want their children and every student to feel welcome in our schools. We understand that not every student group needs to appeal to every single kid. We teach our kids to give the groups that do appeal to them their time, energy, and commitment, and we hope that every kid finds a group of their own that gives them a sense of belonging. Most Cinnamon's and families want our school boards to talk about real issues, and I've heard so many of them tonight. How do we support our teachers so that we're not the next town to fall victim to the teacher shortage? How do we recruit more bus drivers? How do we keep our schools safe without making them feel like prisons? Where can we better support our students with special needs? What can we do to encourage our highest classroom performers? So, do our teachers, and staff, and administrators, and board members, please note that most of Cinnamon's and supports what you do. To give our kids a strong foundation that will prepare them for the future, we're on the same team, and a lot of us are going to start showing up more so that together we can ensure that Cinnamon's and students continue to thrive.
Thank you, Ms. Quinn.
Brittany Ralvis, Cinnamon's in New Jersey. So I am so glad that a mom came up here and talked about this Inclusion 101. I think it's sad that us parents have to talk about this stuff. I think the board should be aware of these meetings. I do not, just for the record straight first, I want to say, I will only speak for myself. I didn't take a pool tonight for Cinnamon's on how most people feel, so I am definitely a parent that respects my rights as a parent, and I will scream that from the rooftops. I think we're all aware of that, that come every month. I think some of those things we've heard tonight are a day late, dollars short. I would think also that if you came here every week or every month and you saw what happens in this room, and when the camera turns off, and the people are here, and we're just having human-to-human conversations, I would think most of them might disagree with you, but anyway, Inclusion 101, I think is so important. Most people may not be aware here in Cinnamon's, and we have no inclusion classrooms. You're either Gen Ed or in the Slow Hall, is what they call it in the high school, is what I was told, which I think is disgusting. We have the Special Education Head of the District sitting at this meeting every month, so the fact that these things aren't publicized. Again, I don't have a child that's classified, but I have definitely sat at that table with those people to see how my children can better assist those children, because at the end of the day, they're all kids and they're all together. So again, I just am a little disheartened, because again, just like I said when I clap, we are Cinnamonsen strong, we are Cinnamonsen proud. We had a seventh grader who ended up in the hospital. I just want to say thank you to this district. I collected over $2,000 from our school community. I went up to the hospital in Philadelphia and met with the family. Thank God that child is now home right now and hoping that there's a long road for recovery for this kid. And crazy enough, my son and this kid don't even get along, but that doesn't matter, because at the end of the day, we are Cinnamonsen and we have each other's back. So again, I would love more people to come here, because I'm sure these people are tired of hearing me and seeing my face every month, but they know I give them the good, the bad, and the ugly, and I will continue to do so, because at the end of the day, we are Pirates through and through. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ralvis. Any other members of the public who'd like to address the board at this time?
Seeing none? Okay. All right, we're going to move on to Section 19, I'm sorry, comments from the board. Ms. Turner?
Good evening. Thank you to everyone for assisting the South Jersey Food Bank with your contributions. Best wishes to the cast and crew of Chicago and Crazy For You, Break A Leg. Emma and Lucia, your reports certainly were well-written and highlighted the terrific achievements of our students. Best wishes and thank you to Kathy Santivanas. Is that right?
Santivanas, yes.
On her retirement, we wish you the best in your new adventures. Congratulations to the boys of our city basketball team that just won and beat Patten Heights in the playoff game. Go Pirates! Welcome to Bethany Weiss to the district. We wish you all the best. The next regularly scheduled board meeting is Tuesday, March 14th, 2023, at 7:00 PM in Room 120 at, no, Cinnamonsen Middle School.
Note, the venue change is Room 120. There is a tech week rehearsal for the middle school kids, and because this board likes to provide for the kids first, it's easier for us to relocate to them. It's the old room we used to meet in down there, just we moved it during COVID time. So right down the hall, tell your friends. Sorry, Ms. Turner.
That's it. Have a good night. Any additional information can be found on the district website. Thank you.
We are going to go into executive session, but we will have a voting, one item to vote on after the executive session. So, Mrs. Quinn, can I have a motion to convene into executive session?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Kenny. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're going into executive session.